Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. We appreciate the time you've taken to be here tonight. Let's call it to order with the pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's begin the roll call, please. Denise Ilerz. Bill Bergerson.
Yes.
Steve Niskoda.
Here.
Deb Piers.
Here.
Marissa McLue.
Yeah.
Karen McLean.
Here.
Lauren Wachernagle.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to have agenda approval. We will have one change to the agenda in 7B, overview of application. Amber Miller will get the overview rather than Kendra Harrington. Motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the October 23, 2025, agenda with the change of Amber Miller.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. We have agenda. We have meeting minutes for the special meeting, September 30, 2025. Get a chance to look those over. I'll look for a motion to approve those minutes.
I just have one minor comment on 5B. The last sentence says Niskoda and Bergerson will each provide a preferred route report for the next meeting. And I think we've come to consensus, so we can strike the word each. No, actually, I believe at the time that we did say that we were going to come up with one.
Okay, so we'll provide a preferred route. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes for September 30, 2025, with the changes on 5B taken to each. I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. We have minutes. Okay, so we have public comments. These comments would be comments not related to the open public hearing on the special land use permit application. Public comments not relating to the solar application. Okay, then we'll move to old business. New business. Then we will move forward to open this public hearing. This is a public hearing for the special land use permit application to White River Township from Lakeside Solar LLC. We need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we open our public hearing.
I'll support that.
Thank you. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. We can open our public hearing. The purpose of today's hearing is for the planning commission to hear the public's opinion on the special land use permit application from Lakeside Solar LLC. The planning commission will discuss the permit application in detail in upcoming meetings. We look forward to collaboration with Lakeside Solar, as well as consultants, to answer all of our questions. Today, we are here to listen to your feedback and gather public opinion on this important topic. After the hearing concludes, the commission will take your comments and questions into serious consideration. So 7A, public comment policy. To ensure that everyone has had an opportunity to be heard, we will observe the following guidelines. For those who wish to speak, please sign up at the table that is still over there. You can still sign up if you haven't. And we will call on you in turn. The comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Please address all comments to the commission. We request that all speakers conduct themselves respectfully. We will not tolerate disruptive behavior or personal attacks. Please state your name, address, and if you're a resident of White River Township. Thank you. So now we will begin 7B, overview of the application by Amber Miller.
Is this someone already?
Oh, it's on the bottom.
Can you hear me? Oh, there we go. Okay. This will be a quick presentation. We just want to do highlighting some of the parts.
We have to hold the call.
Okay, there. Is that working? Okay. My name is Amber Miller. I am the director of permitting for Geronimo Power. I oversee permitting for pretty much the entire country where we have renewable wind, solar, battery storage. I've been with the company for seven and a half years. And prior to that, I worked for Southern Company. Sophia Gillen is our permitting specialist on this project, so she will be the permitting lead. Kendra Harrington is not here tonight. She is the project developer for this project. John Dooley also works with us. He is our land agent in the area for all of Michigan. And then we also have our legal counsel here, Seth. We have been working with the community for several years. Geronimo Power, as you're probably aware, has changed a little bit. So our original founding, we were founded by a farmer in 2007. We still have our first operating wind project on his property in rural Minnesota. In 2019, we were acquired by National Grid Renewables. And then in early 2025, we were sold to Brookfield Asset Management. So we still remain an individual company under a larger umbrella. Brookfield is one of the largest owners of renewable energy and particularly solar assets in the world. It has over $1 trillion of assets under management. And the acquisition of Geronimo Power by Brookfield allows us to have greater capital for funding our projects. Key project information is the project itself is 44 parcels that are under agreement, which equals 1,575 acres that we have land control for. The actual project area, that means within the fence line that will have solar panels on them, is 982 acres. The point of interconnection is the 138 KB DuPont Cobb Transmission Line. We'll do what's a line tap that runs parallel to Lannos Road and crossing over Ilerz Road. We have fully executed GIA agreements with MISO, or yeah, in place with Michigan Electric Transmission Company and two active MISO Q positions. The economic benefits for the project are $40 million over 20 years. That's about $2 million a year. That would be $750,000 over 20 years for a charitable fund that we would work with in the community, either setting up a 501(c)(3) or working with an existing foundation. There would be approximately 200-plus construction-related jobs during the development of the project and three full-time jobs once the project is operational. We submitted, Lakeside Solar submitted an application for a special land use permit on September 16, 2025. That starts the clock ticking on the 120-day review period. And that would be concluded by January 14, 2026. Adjacent landowner conversations are being currently conducted. With, for those who wish to have those conversations, Kendra Harrington is trying to wrap up those meetings by the end of November. So, meeting with individuals and talking about the project. Public Act 233 of 2023 creates an option for developers to ask the MPSC to grant siting certificates for qualifying wind, solar, or energy storage project. The Lakeside Solar project meets PA 233 requirements. Ensuring compliance with legal standards and to keep everyone aligned, here are a couple of the requirements that have been most frequently highlighted. The measurement, these are all things that Lakeside Solar complies with. Measurement setback distances are measured from the nearest edge of the facility's perimeter fence. From the public road right of way, it's 50 feet, a minimum of 50 feet. From property lines of non-participating parties, it is 50 feet. From occupied structures on non-participating properties, it is 300 feet. The solar energy facility can, its maximum noise levels are 55 average hourly decibels at the A-weighted scale according to the state standard. This is measured at the nearest corner, or the nearest outer wall of the nearest home on an adjacent property that is not part of the project. We are also compliant with Section 226 Sub-8. The project fencing complies with National Electrical Code. Solar panel height will not exceed 25 feet. And Lakeside Solar will implement dark sky-friendly lighting solutions. Additionally, we meet all battery storage requirements under 226 Sub-8 as well. So all requirements for, under the state, are met with the application we have provided. We also provided a handout. If you didn't see it, it has, it has the information on our website where our entire application is available for viewing. Also, I assume we, you can view the, a hard copy with the township. They can address that. But all of our project information, maps, there's now an interactive map as well as a PDF, project site plans, all available on the website for anyone who wishes to view them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amber. We will now open the public hearing to public comments. Julie, will you read the names on the list for us?
I'm going, I have page one here. I'm going to call off five names at a time. And so the first person will speak and the other people will be on deck. But it's just to make sure that we get people up here and not have to worry about taking extra time. So the first person up, Rose Rowan. Do you want to come and to the microphone? And then after Rose is Tyrone Klein. Third, Gary Igersall. Fourth, Kurt Cooter. Fifth, Peter Sinclair. Yep, turn it to the left.
My name is Rose Rowan. I live at 7239 Post Road.
Monty, Michigan.
And I am a White River Township resident. I've been a White River Township resident for 72 years. And my property is right there. I am one of the landowners that is going to be affected by the solar. And personally, I moved in there. This is my retirement home. That's going to affect me and my whole family. And looking out at all that pretty land that we have, I'm not in favor of it. My family has been affected by health issues from DuPont or whatever. And right now, it is agriculture. It's very pretty. We have a lot of farm animals. We have a lot of deer. And that's going to affect them. And just looking over the property line and everything, I'm not against solar, but that's a lot of solar power. And that's a lot of solar panels. And I do not agree with it. I mean, I've been there all my life. I was raised and born there. And in my, that of my house is going to be, you know, if I have to sell it, the property value is going down. I mean, why do we need 1,700 to 1,500 acres of solar? Besides, I don't understand where the solar is going to go. And I asked the township to go down. And I would like to thank the township for everything they've done for us because they have listened to all the residents. That's all I have.
My name is Tyrone Klein. I live at 9287 Chase Road. I am a resident of White River Township. I moved back home from North Carolina in 2020 and bought a house in 2021 that's a mile from my parents' house. So like Rose says, this is my retirement home. This is where I want to, lack of better word, kind of just peace out. And when I heard about the, the solar panels coming in, it kind of made me think about, in the process of buying my home, I don't remember being told about this going down, which, you know, in terms of the realtor, realty, you're going to have to dispose of like this. I had a similar situation in North Carolina where there was going to build, you know, a major throughway through where the house is going to be. And I chose not to do that. Fast forward from 2004 to 2024, guess what's there right now? A throughway. So this situation, if I would have been made aware of having a house that was going to be surrounded, and my house will be surrounded. Look at 927, 9287 on these maps that you guys got today. My house will be surrounded by this. And it's not the way that I wanted to peace out by looking at black panels. Where I'm at right now is, it's comfortable. I like it, friends like it. That's where I want to be. Now, now I have a choice to make. Maybe some of the other people here have a choice to make. Do you want to stay around where you're at right now? You've been there for 70-something years. Do you want to stay there? Or maybe you just need to get out because it's not where you want to be and lose your tail and your house being upside down? So just to wrap it up, I'm 100%, 110% against what, what's going down here. My life is being compromised by it. I know there's going to be some people here that are going to make generational wealth from this. God bless them. But you're doing it at our expense. And I don't appreciate that. Thank you.
I am Gary Igersall. Okay, better, Lauren? Gary Igersall, 6533 Indian Point Road. Yes, I'm a White River Township resident. My concern, I won't be looking out the window where I'm at and seeing the panels or any of that. But I am concerned about the future and what happens when these panels have gone through their useful life and need to be replaced, removed, dealt with in some way. As I understand it, they're not, at this point, readily recyclable. They have to be disposed of at someone's cost. I'm not sure how that's going to work. My fear would be, we're looking at a future burden on the residents, the taxpayers of the township, to deal with this. And I just don't know how that will work out. I doubt I'll be around when that happens. But I worry about future generations and crippling the economy of our township for the benefit of a few at this point. So I'm, I'm very hesitant to support the project, all for renewable energy, but I don't see this as the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Planning Commission. My name is Kurt Cooter. I'm the owner of Cooter Farms on Ilerz Road. I live at 4045 Signal Court in Williamston, Michigan. I am asking you, Planning Commission, to recommend to the township board approval of this project, Lakeside Solar. I have been in the renewable energy business for 40 years. Working for a solid waste management company in the early 1980s enabled me to build the first landfill gas project in Lansing, Michigan in 1984. I built six additional landfill gas projects, including four electrical plants, including the one at the Coopersville landfill, before retiring in 2001. When I retired, I worked with, for five years, with six friends. And we tried to build a commercial-scale wind project here in Ophine and Oceania Counties. Unfortunately, that was unsuccessful. After buying my 300-acre farm on Ilerz Road in 2010, I was approached by a solar development company. I signed a lease with them because this was my last chance to participate in a significant renewable energy project. As an environmental engineer, I know renewable energy projects are a way to generate electricity for our society with less impact on our environment than fossil fuel generating plants. I also know our weather is changing substantially due to human activities. Generating more electricity with renewable energy slows the rate of climate change, which is better for our, my kids and your kids, my grandkids and your grandkids, and the planet. This project will provide substantial benefits to the community, including a million dollars a year to the school system without providing additional students, $350,000 per year to the local government, $150,000 a year for local emergency services, and income for lifelong, for many lifelong local farmers who won't have to sell their farms for a comfortable retirement. As a, as a landowner, I also believe I have the right to use my property for a solar farm if that's what I think is its best use. Finally, I want to keep ownership of my farm and my family. This project will allow me to do it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peter Sinclair. I am not a resident of White River. I'm a resident of Midland. But I breathe Michigan air, I drink Michigan water, and I pay Michigan electric rates. And all of us have a state. What gets lost in some of these discussions are some of the very hard, practical realities that we have to deal with. We have a crisis in electric demand right now caused by the growth in AI and data centers, which are unlikely to recede anytime soon. To meet that demand, we have limited options. The supply of natural gas turbines is severely constrained by supply chains, meaning at least a five-year delay. In addition, the current administration hopes to double the export of natural gas in the next five years. The Wall Street Journal reported last week that this will raise the cost of electricity as Americans will be competing against global markets willing to pay two, five, or even 10 times more what we pay here for natural gas. As far as nuclear, we know from SEC-regulated filings that no new significant nuclear capacity will be available for at least 10, if not 12, years into the future. This leaves solar, wind, and battery storage as the only remaining options. Fortunately, they are the quickest to build and the most inexpensive new capacity that we can bring online. A responsible approach to meeting our demand for electricity requires that we be informed of these facts and make our choices accordingly. Many of the concerns that people express do have answers. Concerns about property values have generally found to be unfounded. Concerns about where these panels will end up are generally also unfounded because more and more of these are being recycled, we expect, in the future. Virtually all of these will be recycled. So I would just recommend to people my website, sun101.org, where I have a number of interviews with leading engineers and scientists that speak to a lot of these questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next five people. Number six, Mike Vargo. Seven, Paul Schrader. Eight, Seth Arthur. Nine, Susan Stevenson. Ten, Jeff Knolf. Please come on up.
Application, Geronimo states, quote, "Geronimo Power prides itself over..." Thank you. Mike Vargo, 10304 Lost Valley Road. And I am a township president. In their application, Geronimo states, quote, "Geronimo Power prides itself on developing solar, wind, and energy storage projects that are farmer-friendly, community-driven, and beneficial for local communities," unquote. This project indeed may be farmer-friendly, but only if you're hoping to lease your land to them. This project represents the taking of 36% of our available farmland, over a third. If you want to continue to farm on leased land, the lease price of land just went up as the supply has just been drastically reduced. And if you are a young person hoping to get into farming in this area, won't be you. A recent study indicated prices for ag land increased nearly 20% in areas where industrial-scale renewables were present. If this project goes forward as currently drawn, we just priced a whole generation of the future farmers of America out of the market in this community. Even in PA 233, that sad public act that stripped away virtually all the power of rural townships to protect itself from heavy-handed efforts like Geronimo's, even in PA 233, it says these industrial-scale energy factories shouldn't, quote, "unreasonably diminish available farmland," unquote. While unreasonable is not defined in the act, can we not assume that the loss of 36% of our available farmland crosses well into unreasonable? This project is way too big for our community. Similarly, I haven't seen any evidence that this project has... Similarly, I haven't seen any evidence that this project has been designed in a way that is beneficial to our community either. I hope you looked at the maps with the blue dots on them on your way into the meeting tonight. Each of these dots represents one of your neighbor's houses. There are over 90 of them with a property boundary that touches a field full of solar panels. By my count, over a dozen of them have solar panels on three or four sides of them. Just a reminder, the setback requirement for not participating properties is only 50 feet from the property line. Can you imagine the nightmare of looking out your window or trying to relax in your yard or watch your kids play while there is a shiny black sea of glass panels just 50 feet from your property line as far as you can see? Imagine kids growing up in an environment like that. It's sickening and exceptionally stressful just to contemplate, and significant health consequences of living in a chronically stressful environment are well documented and include heart problems, weakened immune systems, and a whole lot more. Our community is much too densely populated for a factory of this size to exist. Finally, Geronimo says that it prides itself in creating projects that are community-driven. I'm not seeing any evidence of that either. The Planning Commission worked diligently to develop its renewable energy overlay, 500 acres in the existing Dupont brownfield, and offered this to Geronimo as a greatly preferred scale and sighting for its project. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I hope you vote no on this project. And then other people, a vote of three minutes is about.
Well, I wish I was that organized, but I'm not. My name is Susan Stevenson. I live at 7851 Indian Way Road. I've lived there since '72, raised my children, have grandchildren next door, hope to have great-grandchildren there. I don't want them to look at the ugliness of a solar array. What a beautiful world. We're a ray, but it's not beautiful. I understand somebody trying to make money. I do, but it's a horrible position to know that people are actually preying on your community because they want to make money. The thing I don't understand is our governor basically taking away our home determination. And I'm asking that you not allow that. I want everybody to remember there was a time we fought Hooker Chemical, and they were a huge corporation, and we beat them, and we can beat Geronimo too. Thank you.
Paul Schrader, 10261 Chasro, Montague. I'm out here farming six days a week. Funny thing is, I don't see you guys. I see none of you. I don't know why. Must be here at home watching TV or something. But this thing is going to be good for the community. I remember when we tried to build a wind farm. Oh my God. It's going to be the end of the world, so we quit. I do remember when Walmart came to town, seemed like the same probably group of people. I call it pissing and moaning, and guess what? Walmart's here, and I bet you a lot of you go shopping there. So, oh, I know, a few of you don't, and you're heroes because of it. There was this thing called a pig farm. Holy shit. Could have ruined all the flower crack and go out and destroy Lake Michigan. You know that last week, they held a quarter of a million gallons of pig shit out of there? And I'll bet you none of you know about it.
That's disrespectful.
I'm, excuse me. I'm being respectful. You should see the other side of me. All right, so anyway, this solar thing, I know that the state of Michigan has lost something like 5,000 pounds of, 5,000 megawatts of power. And that's got to be replaced. If you just keep having these kind of discussions and don't do anything, you might be able to walk in your house and not turn any power on. So I'm in favor of this 150%.
I'm Jeff Knolf, and I'm at 10945 Williams Road. I'm a veteran, five years of combat. I come back to seek refuge for my own being, and I can't even get that when things are ruined. But, you know, I just want to look at the peaceful land, be quiet. No, we can't have that. We can't. And I'm sure there's other veterans in here too that understand what I'm talking about. I mean, all you want is just peace and quiet. Well, when you talk about that energy, well, guess where that energy goes? Not in White River Township. It goes elsewhere. That's what everybody doesn't talk about. You know, and I'm tired of the lies, the sneaky lies, the backtalk like that. It's just, it's not right. Tell the truth, be an open door. And nobody can do that. Not in a big corporation they can't. If you're going to do something like that, you go somewhere where there's lands already ruined, like the land of Dupont. Use that. But no, we can't do that, can we? And then turn, you know, if you use that land, that's farmland, you're stripping all that topsoil. I bet you don't talk about what happens when you strip that topsoil, do you? Well, then you have decades, even if you wanted to come back, it'd take more than 20 years to get that land back. And when we have crops, those crops are gone, they're gone. You talk about the grandchildren, you know, that'll benefit from that? No, that's not benefit. That's taken away. So on that note, I'm finished.
There was Seth.
No public comment.
No comment? Okay. Thank you. All right, and the next five people, if we could have them go in the same order I call up, it helps me with record keeping. That's, thank you. So number 10, Melissa Lorenz. Number 11, Bill Diddy. Number 12, Marjorie Erdman. Number 13, Celeste Cortez. Number 14, Deborah Hopkinson. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the Township Planning Commission for allowing us to be here tonight and letting our voices be heard. I think that probably everyone in the room would agree with me when I say that if this were not the size it was, or it is, I should say, we would not be here tonight. The main objection to this application that I'm going to urge the township to vote no on is the massive size within a tiny 15.8 square mile township that is one-half the size of a normal township in the state of Michigan. This would change our entire community. Not only would there be many houses, as Mike Vargo mentioned, covered with solar on a 360-degree view, but the construction would happen for 18 to 24 months with heavy trucks and machinery going up and down our rural roads as people are trying to take their kids to school and maintain their lives. It's really unfortunate that the state of Michigan is classified solar and wind as a crop. We all know it's not a crop. It's industry. When you're speaking about a solar array of this size, it's called a utility-scale solar array. It is industry. The mental health of everyone around it, the peaceful enjoyment of their homes, will be destroyed. There are 55 short-term rentals in White River Township. I don't know what a typical, or if there's such a thing, is a typical rural farming community, but we are not it. We're a mix of farming and tourism. We're beautiful beaches. This is next to Critical Dunes. This is over wetlands. This is on a migratory bird path where the Audubon Society, of course, champions renewable energy, as they should. However, they say it should be placed with responsible sighting. The size of this is anything but responsible, and this is not a community, this is not a company that has our community's best interests at heart. This was totally on display when they refused to work within the 500-acre, very generous zoning ordinance for solar that the township allowed, or within the renewable energy overlay at Dupont. We don't want to get dumped on twice by companies that don't have our best interest at heart, or really, if you include Hooker three times, please vote no. Thank you.
Why am I always following Melissa? It seems like it's that way. My name is Bill Diddy, 7540 North Old Channel Trail, White River Township resident. Thanks for having me. Thank you, Planning Commission, for having this meeting tonight. And as a resident, I wanted to make three points and share that with you on the special land use permit today. Number one, for those that haven't reviewed our master plan lately, I highlight a couple main things here, right? That the main goal is to maintain patterns of development that accommodate, enhance, and preserve the township's pastoral setting, rural amenities, open spaces, and scenic beauty. All right? I'll start with that as my first point, and I'll come back to that. Number two, we are a zoned community of 15.8 square miles, and I'm proud that we have a solar ordinance that provides up to 500 acres of solar, which is still very generous, as Melissa just said in her statement, right? Given our small rural community. Which brings me to my third point, right? And by the way, before I get to number three, some of you may know that I'm active, outdoors, and use solar personally. So, again, very proud of the current ordinance that we have. As we get to point number three, as Amber said, this is 1,575 acres that's proposed as part of the industrial solar, and it's just not acceptable by the merits of our master plan or the solar ordinance, right? So, what I request, and please review, I guess I should say, please review the Lakeside Solar Special Land Use Permit accordingly, and vote no if Lakeside Solar does not meet our plan is willing, and is not willing to look at that. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Marjorie Erdman, 6718 Post Road, and thank you, Commission, for what you do. I don't envy your job and the scope of what you have to take on here. My husband and I have lived in White Lake Township, in White River Township, for 37 years. We have lived on Post Road. We moved to the farmhouse that we have with the specific intention of having farmland around us. We just loved it. So, it's just so different now. I just can't even think of what we're going to look out on. It's crushing to my mental health too to think how destructive that that's going to be. We have family that come all over to our home, and we love it there. My husband right now is processing a deer. That's not going to happen. And that's why we moved there. Thank you.
Celeste Cortez, I live on Walsh Road in Montague Township. Good evening. As a stockholder of this company, Lakeside Solar, who's changed its name to the very indigenous Geronimo, I object to the massive solar on important fertile farmland. I look over at the table and see the guys trying to protect their jobs and a lawyer who will bill till the cows come home, but they won't come home because there's nothing to feed them.
I'm Deborah Hopkinson, 8713 Lathan Road, resident of White River Township. I just wanted to begin by thanking the Planning Commission for all of the hard work that you've done, just dedicated to representing the residents of the township, all of the residents of the township, and the board as a whole, working to comply with the vague guidelines of PA 233. You've done a great job, exhaustive research, and I'm grateful to everyone of you for everything that you've done for us. I'll add that I am against the project for a lot of reasons, but the first one is that we welcome renewables in our community by having a renewable energy overlay that conforms with PA 233, and this application completely ignores that. Our Rio offers 500 acres of brownfields. That's 5% of our total land mass. That's a lot in a tiny community that, as Melissa said, is not only rural, not only farming, but is also tourism, and we have a lot of visitors who come here for the natural beauty. That's what brought my husband and I here 28 years ago. Anyway, that 5% is going to be rehabilitated into a force for good for our community that is scarred deeply by the environmental abuses of the past. If we use that, we heal ourselves and we heal the land, and that's why we have the Rio there. And the fact that it's being ignored makes this categorically the wrong project for our community. I mean, you guys, I mean, the board, I guess, not you guys, but together with the board, you studied PA 233, consulted with conservation experts, listened to residents, and ultimately you heeded the science from national environmental groups like the Nature Conservancy and the Enrol and the EPA. All of them urged the use of brownfields over ag land for renewable sighting. 16% of our township is already brownfield. Why would we turn another 16% into a solar power plant? Instead, Geronimo wants to take 36% of our farmland, as Mike said, and turn it into an industrial site. Their website mentions financial reasons, no fewer than five times, for not using our Rio. Any financial reasons for refusing to use our township's Rio are not our concern. They're not our responsibility. It is our responsibility to act as stewards of the land that we all live on and preserve its resources. Geronimo wants to take control, control, of 1,500 acres of land running through the center of our community. With 87 people per square mile, as Melissa said, there's 100 homes that border on or are completely surrounded by panels. These families will be tormented by the dust, the noise, the diesel exhaust, I mean, how ironic is that, of the heavy trucks, machinery, cranes, and the personal vehicles of 200 workers, Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for two years. What toll is this going to take on everybody's physical and mental well-being and those of their children playing in their yards or trying, but they can't because they're choked with dust and diesel exhaust? I don't know how any of us will function when the roads are flooded by these vehicles. Three minutes? Okay. Anyway, you guys, thank you so much for everything you do. We're so grateful for your representation, and we love you. Vote no.
The next, the next five people. Number 15, Matt Hedges. 16, Liz Hedges. 17, Jason Rice. 18, Bob Meacham. 19, Dave Borgeson. Thank you.
My name is Matt Hedges, and I live at 10076 Old Highway 99 in Montague. I am a resident of White River Township. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply frustrated and honestly heartbroken about the idea of a massive solar farm coming to our community. We moved here, we live here, because we value the peace, the open land, the wildlife, and the small-town way of life. This is home, not an industrial site. Covering our fields and farmland with endless rows of panels and fencing isn't progress. It's just a structure of what makes this place special. I keep hearing that this project is green and good for the environment, but tell me, how is it good for the environment to rip up fertile soil, cut down trees, drive out wildlife, and surround neighbors with metal and glass? How is it good for our community when property values drop, when people stop wanting to live near this kind of industrial mess? We're told it's temporary, but 30 years isn't temporary. That's a generation. Once the land is covered, it's gone. The character of our township... The character of our township will never be the same. And let's be honest, the company isn't doing this for us. They're doing it for profit. We get the noise, the construction, the loss of scenery, and the risk of being left with a cleanup bill when it's all over. They get the tax breaks and the revenue. That's not fair. I'm not against solar power, but it needs to be placed in the right areas, on commercial rooftops, brownfields, industrial zones, not in the middle of family homes and farmland. Scale and location matters. The proposed facility is described as spanning approximately 1,500 acres in White River Township. For context, the township is only about 10,000 acres. In size, less than half the size of a typical township. This means that the project would cover roughly 15% or more of the entire township area. Farmland character and long-term land use. Much of the land is described as agricultural and recreational in zoning, and currently contributes to the rural, open-space character that draws people here. I'm asking this board, as neighbors, and as people who care about this community, please listen to the people who live here. We're not being negative. We're protecting our homes and our families. Once you let something like this in, there's no going back. Please vote no. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liz Hedges, and I live at 10076 Old Highway 99 with that guy. I, well, actually, we are adjacent landlords. And we're concerned with the construction disturbance that the solar installation will incur for 18 to 24 months straight, and the disruption that that will bring to our community and to our own family's daily life. We have met with Kendra and John and talked about screening, but yet was unable to receive any guarantee or agreement from Geronimo to adhere to screening preferences and uphold their commitment to be good neighbors. I urge the board to demand 100% screening for the entire project area before considering the entire proposal. Also, the industrial solar project does not adhere to our master plan, and White River is a zoned community that allows for 500 acres of solar in our small, 15.8 square-mile township. For the sake, safety, healthy, our health, well-being, and future of White River Township, its residents, and families, I ask that you vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jason Rice, a resident 7029 West Clay in Claybanks Township. I actually serve as the Chief Sales and Growth Officer and Principal Broker, Kohlberg Schmidt Family of Companies, serving 98 markets within Michigan, Ohio, and Florida. I'm also, obviously, a resident in the White Lake area, and our kids attend Montague schools. I'm also the Principal Broker here for our local Whitehall office. I was asked to speak today on the potential impacts of our solar, of this proposed solar project in White River Township, from the perspective of our area's real estate market. I first want to acknowledge that there are a variety of reports and studies with varying views on this matter, on this topic. And I'm not here to advocate for any viewpoint, but rather to simply share some observations in this real estate market, our real estate market, as this proposed project has garnered attention in recent years. With several of our area real estate associates living and doing business in White River Township and the surrounding areas, clearly, this proposed project has received reactions from both buyers and sellers. My survey of their experiences pointed to a great deal of uncertainty and concern with respect to this project. Buyers have indeed showed hesitation to purchase in this area. They simply have. This hesitation, although it doesn't always lead to the buyer choosing not to buy in White River Township, is certainly decreased the buyer pull in the area and thereby overall demand for existing homes and for new builds. Perspective buyers have shared their fears or concern with our agents. Fear about the views and ambiance of the community, things you've heard tonight, health and safety concerns, you've also heard that tonight, and fear of the unknown or long-term impacts. I like to just not use this. With buyer sentiment as such and likely to grow if this project becomes a reality, the area will likely see a decreased demand for buyers looking to move into the White River Township area. I think we all understand that a decreased demand will certainly influence supply and ultimately, home values. Sellers are likely to see negative impacts to their property valuations and experience longer time on the market. To what extent, no one knows. We don't have an answer to that. But at very microeconomic level, I think it's clear that there will be an impact. With all that said, it's my understanding that there are potential alternatives to this project. I think there's evidence that many of those alternatives are viable and have been used in other areas and other markets in Michigan without the negative impacts to the surrounding real estate market. To conclude, the project has the potential to significantly impact our area's real estate market and the subsequent socioeconomic elements connected to it. From my perspective, I would strongly encourage the decision-makers, the committee today, and any stakeholders to take seriously the fears and concerns of our area's buyers and sellers. I think it's prudent for you as stewards of our community to do so, and I'm glad to engage with follow-up after the fact. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'm not as loud as Jason. Speak as loud as you can. Bob Meacham, 10735 Williams Road, and I'll be up here tomorrow. So, if you want to see what 166 acres looks like, go over and look at that Macbeth solar. This is 10 times the size of that. If you're just standing, you'd say, 10 times? Listen what that would be. This is an industrial solar. This isn't your backyard solar that anybody can do. It's just ridiculous. And I just say, no, we're not voting for it. As Star Trek says, "The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the one or the few." Sorry, Paul.
This is working for me, isn't it?
Yes.
I'm Dave Borgeson, 6198 Missy Juan, Claybanks Township, just to the north in Oceana County. I'm here to talk about two particular problems that I see with the proposed solar energy project. The first is the obvious one. The township is being asked to approve a three-square-mile section of their prime farmland for solar development. Well, the township has a ordinance against such a change in ag. Township ordinance is designed to protect ag land from non-ag development, and if a solar operation of three square miles isn't a major diversion of ag land, I don't know what it would be. The problem, too, with that kind of a development is not just the loss of the productive farmland and the food it produces. For 25 years, it will also have lost its farm labor and the financial situation that would result. So, the township has a lot of company, and it's growing support from scientists and from government at all levels. The president, Secretary of the Interior, the Secretary of Energy, and the Secretary of Agriculture recently stated they're going to withhold future subsidies for solar. There's good reason for that. Solar is not what it's cracked up to be. It's not contributing like people think it would have. And so, from all sides, you should deny the program just on the basis of preserving the farmland. The other one that I'm particularly interested in, as I drive many times, dozens of times, from my place in Oceana County, up Chase Road, also known as the Shoreline Trail, into the golf course, into White Lake to Fish, Montague to Shop. And each time I travel that road, I'm impressed with the scenic beauty of it. It blows a person's spirit, and there's value to that. You can ask any Realtor if a view has any impact on property values, and he'll tell you, well, you know what he'll tell you. For that reason, also...
Thank you. The next five people. Number 20, Craig Cudney. 21, Karen Hope. 22, Kim Seer. 23, Gary Foninsteele. 24, Michael Sigurd.
Good evening. Craig Cudney, 7925 Old Channel Trail. I'm not personally opposed to solar, but I believe it needs to be sized for the community and the consideration of its neighbors. What we have forced now doesn't none of that. If we were to allow that to go in at 15, 16, 1700 acres, you're just gonna turn White River into a solar cesspool. I also agree with Bob Meacham. If you want to see what 165 acres looks like, just go over here to Sigging Road and take your map of where this is gonna be and drive around White River Township. See how that looks to you, if you're okay with that. All right. Thank you, Board.
Hi, my name is Karen Hope. We have a home at 7329 North Old Channel Trail. And I just wanted to share that I think that the PA 233 has a number of flaws, as it's written. Specifically, it doesn't address the size of, or give a maximum size to, these solar panels, these solar arrays. And as people have pointed out, approximately 16% of White River Township will now be, would now be covered in these solar panels. That just is incomprehensible. But I also question, I mean, is that, there's no cap. So, this current proposed 16%, will it remain at 16? Or will it continue to grow? No one's addressed that issue. I mean, if my home was being surrounded, and my heart goes out to everybody whose family will be touched, I would consider selling to them, or leasing to them. PA 233 also does not address population density. As we've said, there's nine homes that will be encapsulated by this project. There are 90 that will be touched by the project, and my understanding is there's like 650 that are within a mile of the project. And I have walked the property, one of the corners of the property will be as close as one-quarter mile to Lake Michigan in a critical doom. That just is wrong. I can, I question what will happen to our wildlife. I do live on Lake Michigan, and within the last three weeks, and I can share videos, but I've enjoyed seeing up to 16 deer frogging in the lake. Just yesterday, the eagles were soaring over our bluff. There is at least one eagle's nest within a short distance from my home. So, what will happen to the wildlife? And I also question, one of the gentlemen who is going to lease his property doesn't even live on his property. Are they, are these people that are going, these farmers that are gonna lease their property, are they going to live through this construction? Are they gonna be, remain committed to this community? Or are they gonna take their newfound money and sprint? I guess those are all my questions. I have more questions than answers, it seems. And also, we talked about, I mean, Amber was very willing to share that we are, the asset company has 1 trillion in assets, but they're not committing to screening, correct? That's just not right. So, again, I mean, there's many more things I'm sure we could all share, but I thank the committee for allowing us the time, and I urge you to vote no.
Good evening. My name is Kim Seer. I reside at 8487 Staple Road in Twin Lake, which is Blue Lake Township. But I am the Muskegon County Commissioner for District One, and which includes White River Township. And disclaimer, I am not anti-solar. White River Township, I'm just gonna make a few points real quick. White River Township is too small for this solar array. Number two, as has been stated already, the master plan says it's not the right place for this solar array. I also support local control of land use issues. No one knows better than the community what the local residents need. The last item I have here is there are many terrible lands in White River Township that lend themselves to farming. Between 2017 and 2022, the United States lost almost 142,000 farms. In Texas alone, more than 17,000 farms disappeared during the same window, and more than 1.6 million acres of farmland vanished. We, or the US, has now become a net importer of food. We no longer make enough food to feed our own people. So, I would say that sacrificing farmland for solar is the wrong direction for White River Township. Brownfields, not crop fields.
My name is Gary Foninsteele. I'm not a resident of the township. In fact, I didn't even sign up to be here. A person from this area signed me up because they thought I might have something pertinent to say, and you guys can decide that. I'm a PhD environmental ecologist, University of Michigan graduate, 30 years of normal research scientist, University of Michigan faculty, published ridiculous amount of papers, all that stupid stuff that old people do. I would just like to comment on a few things that were said today. And the first thing I can be very clear about is that this project will have no effect on atmospheric CO2 concentrations or climate change. So, if anybody's appealing to that emotion, forget it. Second is a question about electric demand. There's no doubt it's increasing. And certainly, the proposed, any proposed CO2, I mean, any proposed data centers would be a problem, but it's also that we have an increased demand is because of the greening environment in renewables and recyclables. Everybody knows we're using many more electric appliances and stuff. So, that's part of the issue as well. And so, I strongly believe, being an environmental ecologist, that climate change, we're seeing climate change, and the move to renewables is absolutely necessary, but the right time and a place. And I would ask the people proposing this, why this area? What's wrong with the Muskegon County Wastewater Treatment Plant, places like that? There's tons of places that you could put this. And why here? This seems crazy for me, again, an outsider. I'm not from here, from this, I mean, I'm Muskegon County, but I'm not from this area. And finally, let me just say that in terminology that any climate activist or climatologist can relate to, if this project is approved, it's highly probable that you will regret that decision, and even more highly likely that will have a negative impact for this community. Thank you.
Mike Sigginger, I live at 1053 Crystal Lake Township, Whitehall. I own property in White River Township. I got a letter the other day, Lakeside Solar, telling me about their plans that are gonna go in out there. And I looked up their website, and I also looked into the best practices that are available for siting solar. And there is a University of Michigan Planning and Zoning Solar Energy System Guide for Michigan Local Governments that I found, 2025 edition. There's a lot of information in here that I encourage everybody to look at and to read. There's a lot of things about this Public Act 233. There's a lot of criteria for renewable energy that... There's a lot of criteria for renewable energy that each township could make to make an area that this works. I feel like the township's zoning is very adequate. They've done a great job. They've done a lot of work with their master plan, with their current zoning, with their overlay district. I feel like they've met what they need to make a good solar zone. I just wanted to also make a point of there's drainage issues. I know that there's a Pearson drain that runs through a lot of this. There's other areas, it's all clay a lot out there. And so I've heard anything talk about that, but there's some drainage issues that would potentially be an issue for my property. I had just heard anybody talk about that. The other thing I wondered is if anybody had ever inquired to the power company about the need for the generator, the substation on the DuPont site. They are not there anymore and inquiring to them maybe would be something that would be worth looking into at a township level. I inquired personally back when the wind was being looked at 10 years ago and didn't get anywhere on a personal level, but maybe at a township level they could get somewhere. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Number 25, Mary Jo Ernst. 26, Phil Patch. 27, Roy Burkholder. 28, Liz Vargo. 29, Connie Wade. Connie Wade is not. Oh, take her off? Okay.
Hello, I'm Mary Jo Ernst. I do not have a website, so you can find me at 7044 West Old Channel Trail. First off, I wanted to say thank you for allowing this special public meeting and listening to your residents. I have many issues with this application, but to me, the most important reason to deny this application is the population density of White River Township. We would have 90 homes directly affected. This is very unusual in a renewables industry to have this high amount of impacted not participating homes. We have a special land use permits that assess the benefits and the burdens of our township. When applied for, this application would be a burden to our community as it would stress our services, our residents' way of life and mental health. Muskegon County, along with Orland and Aggleston Township, are in the construction process of a 1,900 acre industrial solar array. It's out on Apple Avenue. This is an example of responsible citing. It's being built at a wastewater treatment plant where there is complete screening, full-size trees, not the puny dead shrubs like the Montague Array around the entire perimeter, making it difficult to see. The 1 million plus solar panels would minimal impact to the three homesteads in the area. Yes, only three homes, not 90 like our township. If we add these 1,900 acres to the Montague Array that is online in Montague Township, Muskegon County already has 2,000 acres of industrial solar. What is considered enough for one county? I think we've done our part. In comparison, let's talk about the application in front of the PC and board. The citing for this proposal of 1,500 acres on their maps in the application, they show very minimal screening and will not be using full-size trees like the wastewater project. It disrupts 90 of our homes on the grid with some 360 surrounded. If approved, it disables long-term planning in the township and destroys prime farmland. However, our REO, our Renewable Energy Overlay District located on Chemours Property, aligns with Muskegon Wastewater Solar and does not affect any landowners and is beneficial reuse of our brownfields. Michigan has the most precious resource, freshwater. What will happen in the future as our farmland gets buried with industrial solar and we are called upon to feed the world? I urge you to cite right. Big solar should go in brownfields, not farm fields, and I urge you to vote no on this special land use application. And I'm going to ask everyone here to stand up who believes that this application is not a good fit for our township. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Phil Patch. I live at 108 White Road, 6392, and I am a resident. And I am beyond frustrated. I think most of us are here. I am disgusted. I am mortified. What our charming solar friends are doing is not in the interest of the community or the people. There are other places you could go. Would you want this in your backyard? I don't think so. So anyway, our beautiful, peaceful pastoral township is going to be ravaged. It will never be the same. By the time you bring in all the rocks, it will never be farmland again and you know it. And what, you say things, but I don't trust you, I don't believe you, and therefore I don't respect you. You know, what, what is going to happen in five years when the technology has quadrupled on solar panels? What about in 10 years when these solar panels are so out of date? What's going to happen then? Who's going to handle this? Much less even further down the road. Why would you want to be here in an area that is so cloudy, so overcast, that you will only generate a part of the power that you brag you will get? And then the snow cover? Look at what's happened in Montague. It's vastly not produced, but what they said it would produce. There have been water issues with runoff. And now they're on their third owner? Whatever contracts and stuff go on, what's going to happen? You know, Lake Shore, Geronimo, whoever you're going to be next month or next year, and after it's built, it'll be sold and sold again, and who is the loser? Now, where I live, I won't have to see it and my heart goes out to you folks that will be looking at this, but it is wrong, the size is wrong. And if you cared about us as a community, you would have done the brownfield, but that wasn't profitable enough. This is about profit and greed. It's not about the best good for the most people. Everybody, all the experts say that there's no way wind and solar will ever, ever meet the electrical needs. But here we are, stuck. Thank you, Lansing, for taking away our right to say no. Even though the majority of us are not into this, we won't even get the say, and I appreciate being here and asking you not to vote for it, but sadly, do we have any say? Look at the constructions already done. Thank you.
My name's Roy Burkholder. I live at 9120 Trails End Drive, Montague, and I am a resident. I'm opposed to the special land use permit for Lakeside Solar to use 1,575 acres of farmland for this solar project, and I would urge the commission to vote no. I'm thankful the White River Township already established the Renewable Energy Overlay of 500 acres of the DuPont Chemours property. Using that brownfield site for the solar project would be a win-win situation to produce renewable energy at a location that would have the least effect on the neighbor's property. Now, I read the Lakeside Solar document explaining why they chose not to use this brownfield site, and I'm disappointed. Their economic and logistical issues that they cited could possibly be caused because they prematurely made contracts to rent farmland before they worked with their township on finding the best site. I think if they would rethink it, there are a lot better options than what they chose. I don't know how many more opportunities in my lifetime will have to use the DuPont Chemours Brownfield site for a good use. So I am not ready to let Lakeside Solar take the quick and easy option that they currently seek. I would like to see the solar project split into two phases to reduce the risk of the unexpected consequences from the huge scope. I'd like the first scope to be 500 acres to use the brownfield renewable energy overlay. And after they demonstrate that they can environmentally responsibly complete Phase 1, then we'll consider a second phase for the rest of it. One of my primary concerns is grading topsoil that would make the land unfit for future farming. And the question and answers part of Lakeside Solar Project, they stated that up to 20% of the site may need to be graded. That's 315 acres. That's a lot of cubic feet of dirt that needs to be moved and possibly could be eroded with a heavy rain. If the special use permit happens to be approved, I would strongly urge a requirement that no topsoil can be moved unless it's replaced to the equivalent original depth over the entire project. And I'm going to close with a song that was popular for the environment back in my generation. It said, "Don't it always seem to go? You don't know what you've got till it's gone. They paved paradise, put up a parking lot." Well, in our case, they're going to plaster 1,500 acres of landfill with a hard elevated surface of solar panels, and I think we'll live to regret that.
Hi, my name is Liz Vargo. I live at 10304 Lost Valley Road and I am a resident of White Lake Township. Thank you for listening to all of us. I won't be long because everybody said pretty much what I wanted to say. I am very against this. I think for any of us who live in this area, we understand how beautiful the farm fields are. Even right now, you're driving through the farm fields and you can see the color of the trees. One of the treasures of springtime is when we hear the sandhill cranes coming in and we're like, oh, it's spring, here's the sandhill cranes. And when I drive to work, I pass the fields and all the sandhill cranes are beating down there and it's just, it just warms my heart. I don't know if the application for Geronimo Power didn't mention that the fact that the Pearson drain isn't breeding ground for the majestic sandhill cranes. And I'm worried that they might put them in danger with a lot of the other wildlife. Unfortunately, solar panels can be a death trap for the cranes and other birds that land in water because they mistake the reflective surface of them for water and they're injured or killed. And how heartbreaking is that going to be to see our beautiful sandhill cranes destroyed? In summary, I don't think it's the right answer. I agree with everybody. It should be put on the 500 acres of land that has already been set aside. Please think about putting it on the brownfields rather than on our beautiful farmland. It's too big for the community. It's, it's just not going to work. It's actually going to be a negative, a very negative impact. 40% of our open areas is just, is just too much. It should not intrude on our wetlands and our critical dunes. I'm so surprised that Eagle is even allowing it. It just astounds me that they're allowing it to come through near the critical dunes. If anywhere in the, if anywhere in the township, it should be on the Renewable Energy Overlay and we have that contaminated land to use, not our beautiful farmland. I think this is just a sad situation where very few people are going to benefit and many, many people are going to lose. Thank you.
Welcome. 32, Joel Smith. 33, Scott Root votes. Root votes.
Hi there, I'm Chris Rogers, 9515 Lehman Street. Lifelong and generational resident of White River Township. I come from a farm family. I know the hard work. I respect the hard work. It makes my heart happy when I go to work in my late hour, 8 o'clock, and I see somebody out there working a field. It's like, that's good, honest, hard work. And I respect that from the bottom of my heart. But we live in a really, really unique community. We're rural, but we're also residential. 90 houses around all these farm fields in this beautiful township, that's special and that's different. This monstrosity is too big for us. I get, I've heard multiple times, we need to do our part, we need to do something, we need to help. Imagine if those 90 houses were given solar or wind to power their houses. Those 90 houses would be off the grid. I would go off the grid if I could afford it. Nobody's giving me money to go off the grid and do my part. Imagine how much would be off of it if we all, all of us residents, what if we all could have solar on our houses, our personal houses? We wouldn't need this crap to help everybody else. We'd help our community and help other people by getting our butts off of that grid. Something to think about. This isn't for us. It's too big. We're special. It needs to be smaller. You know, if you're working with us, it's going to be smaller and it's going to accommodate and people are going to be satisfied with what we end up with. So please, still, again, and forever, vote no. Thank you.
Hello, Ellie Gudrow, 8990 Beach Ridge Drive, White River Township. Yeah, amazing turnout, very impressive. Thank you very much. Déjà vu, some things you don't want to relive, but here we are. It's very unfortunate. But yes, I am completely against what is being proposed here. And I agree with all of the negatives and I can't really see any positives at all. I do support solar, but not at this magnitude. And I just, it's actually mind-boggling that we're here again, but I don't want to delay. There's a lot more other voices here tonight and I just want to thank you and hope you vote no.
Hi, my name is Tim Alkum. I am a resident, 10521 Old Highway 99. I have 33 years in the power business. We were taught in the early 2000s, I've said this before, but some of you haven't heard it. Our company taught us about green energy before anybody was doing it and they said we're never going to do it. And the only reason they did was because the government stepped in with subsidies and bought all the big corporate America and said, you will do this. But we were educated and told what a farce it is. Everything you hear on the news is not true. It is, it's just bad. It is not renewable. It uses twice as much fossil fuel. It's killing us. It doesn't produce the power. The field over here in Montague, when they put it in, said 36 megawatts, a Sigurd farm. It makes four. The waste facility down in Muskegon, it's 2,000 acres of property. Yes, it, it's industrial because it's polluted. That field, they say, makes 200 megawatts. It'll make 40 at best. This field here that we're looking at, 1,500 acres, okay, they're saying 200 megawatts. They know the truth, they're lying to us. It will make less than 40 megawatts. They're not even honest with their product. They sent us a permit, a contract that said they would produce 200 megawatts. Isn't that a breach when it can only make 40? So I'm against it. I mean, I talked to Kendra, their rep, and I questioned her. I said, Kendra, I said, if your mom lived in a spot and solar was going around it, and she answered all my questions up to this point. I said, would you be pushing this around your mom? She went quiet. She didn't answer the question. Then I asked her, I said, Kendra, we're taking all this farmland from Michigan to put in solar. What about the food for your kids? She said, I don't care. I will always have food. Wouldn't answer, huh? I mean, that, that's pretty sad. I wouldn't be proud of that. The wave of the future, we do know what power is going to be and there's going to be people And there's going to be people that aren't happy with it. It's 15 years old. I'll leave it at that.
Hi, good evening. My name's Joel Smith. I speak for my wife and myself, White River Township residents, 11440 Old Highway 99. I do want to thank the board and the planning commission for all your time and effort that you guys have done over the last several years. It's greatly appreciated. I just wanted to mention a couple of things similar to what other people have mentioned. But being residents of White River Township, we understand that this is a zoned community. And as such, we understand that we have to abide by the zoning and the ordinance of this township when we own property here. So I'm a strong believer in property rights, but as a resident of the zoned township, I need to abide by those zoning ordinances and I cannot toe up whatever I'd like to on the property that I own, even if I'd like to. There's methods for that. One of them is a special end use permit, which is before us today. There's a few requirements of a special end use permit in our ordinance. And one of them is that it needs to be, it must, it shall be in general agreement with the master plan. This, which has been stated before, I'll restate it, is to maintain patterns of development that accommodate, enhance, and preserve the township's pastoral setting, rural amenities, open spaces, and scenic beauty. I think this is a hard no. I think it fails one of the clear litmus tests of the special end use permit. And for that reason, I ask that you vote no. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Rootvotes, 6710 Lakefront Drive. I am a resident of Muskegon, but also I own here in Montague. But I have been coming to White Lake. It's been my second home since 1965. And I am actually here speaking on behalf of myself, but more importantly, on behalf of my father, David Rootvotes, who passed away in February, but whose opinion on this subject I knew extremely well. And we're both vehemently opposed to this project. First of all, I want to encourage this committee as well as this community to remember your own history and learn from it. Three generations ago, this community gladly welcomed Hooker and DuPont and to boost the economy of this community. And we know how that turned out. The next generation had to fight with the state and with those companies in order to get them to admit that they were polluting our water and our land. And this generation continues to fight to get that cleaned up. And several generations into the future will continue to suffer the effects of those industries that we welcomed in the past. I believe that the people that started those companies and did this three generations ago were well intentioned, did not know the harm that they were going to cause. I believe that could be true of the solar stuff that we're doing now as well. We don't know the long-term effect of taking 1,500 acres, removing the topsoil, putting solar panels over it and leaving it. We'll find out. Or our future generations, our grandchildren, will find out. And I think they're going to regret it. I will say that one thing those companies did do was provided hundreds of good jobs here in the community. This project does nothing close to that. It provides some lease income for a few property owners and that is the only thing it'll do for this community. They said that there will be 200 jobs involved in installing it. I happen to work for a solar company currently, installing a project on a large project, our commercial building in Grand Rapids. And I can tell you that there is only one person involved in that large project who doesn't commute a minimum of an hour away to come and put those solar panels on. It's not going to create jobs here. It's not going to create wealth here. Finally, I want to say that, this is my own belief and was my father's belief, that the use of green fields arable land for solar is immoral. That should be used for growing food. It's been stated by others. There are plenty of other places to use solar. It may not be as economical. It may be more expensive to do, but there's very few other places to produce food. And last, to the gentleman who mentioned that he doesn't see any of us woke individuals driving by his property, I wanted to let you know that every time I do come to my property, I drive down Prue Vale Road, I drive down Lameus. I love the views of the farm fields. I spent many days on Shoal Farms in my life and I love that beautiful pastoral setting that we have. And to the lady who mentioned the sandhill cranes, one of my absolute favorite sites is the site of many sandhill cranes in one particular field that I passed. And where the fuck are they going to land?
Okay, then thank you so much, everyone. The next, number 34, Stu Shoal. 35, John Morris. 36, John Wilkinson. 37, Amy Wilkinson. 38, Irene Scolton. Thank you. Thank you, Scolton. I'm so sorry. And number 39, this will be our last person. Is it Marv?
Mario.
Mario.
Nada.
Nada.
Okay.
Oh, and I'm sorry, number 40, Chelsea Bender.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Is this, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Because I'm used to yelling. I'm going to do what I did teaching school out west. And now I'm going to pull down, does this work at all? Do we have a picture of the?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. Why do we have that? Okay. I'm going to, so I'm going to show you an aerial view. This is, if you can have a little imagination, this is Lameus Road. This would be Old 99 here. And there's just a little over a mile stretch here and we're on Isler's Road. I live on Isler's Road. I'm a, oh yeah, 5955 Isler's Road, Montague Township. I'm 557 yards away from you guys in the other township, okay? Now, well, let's pretend that Isler's Road goes through the middle of this. So when we get on this dirt road, it used to be paved and it's amazing. The ecology has turned it back, so going back. But if you go down a little bit, there's Joe Vogel, the wonderful Joe Vogel house. Hey, Joe, he was out there. And I stopped by the other day. We're talking lots and the birds and all that stuff. It was great. But when you just get past Joe's house, you come across the Pearson Creek Drain. There's a, there's a bridge right there and they just put a wildlife wetlands area and it took all the sand out. Now we have a sand dune over at Bob Isler's old place. But this wetland, what bothers me is what's going to happen here? Because it is completely surrounded by solar panels. And I don't think the sandhill cranes are going to land on the panels or hurt themselves. But I just wonder how it will affect the migratory birds. There were 24 white eaglets there this spring, okay? Let's keep going by Joe's house, I mean, Bob Isler's house. And we get to a little creek before we get to Old United. And this creek is a, it flows all winter. It is fed by springs from the woodlot that's just north of it there. And it used to be all white ash and they have all died, okay? So it doesn't look like much, but we still get water out of it 24/7 every day of the year. This is where the potterwadames were, okay? And I think it's on Cockles property and all that there. That's a very special place. And I know that that woodlot is going to disappear. And if you go follow the stream, it goes into the woodlots that's across from Cockles. That's going to disappear and they had huge trees in there. I'm not sure if there's bald eagles or anything in there. But I'm just thinking of the places that we could, should try to save if it's going to happen. Let's go back here. Lameus Road, the power company, no, excuse me, the road company used to put all kinds of fencing here, snow fence. Well, if we're going to have their fence here, why don't we also plant a bunch of trees that are going to catch the snow and just, you know, utilize that space for a natural snow fence or something? Yes, oh, how many more minutes do I have? That's it? All right. The last thing I want to say is just this. Nobody works harder than our farmers, okay? And I have, I just, I give them credit for what they do and the fact that they're in a terrible situation, okay? And I just wish we could, somehow the state could support the farming. So I'm so sorry. All right, here we go.
John Morris, 7693 North Old Channel Trail. Basically, again, not against solar, just the size of the overall project. I mean, it's massive. The master plan has a great location for where reasonable sized solar is. As I say, listen, I did think about one thing just myself, just kind of brainstorming my own thoughts. It's like, we hear this number, like, okay, so it's 2 million per year over this X number of years. I mean, what about the potential use of that property in the long term? Is that even a good number? If you forecast out $2 million today in today's dollars versus 20 years from today in these fixed price contracts or whatever they may be if they exist then? I mean, I don't know, it's good. And by the way, if I was a farmer and the few that are going to get it, I'd definitely take the money. To be honest, that's what I would do. But luckily, there's way more of us out here and it's not good for the community as a whole, right? And so I'm against it. Just kind of say that right there and give you some. And I believe pro-solar and put it on the brownfield.
Hello, neighbors. I'm John Wilkinson. I live at 11038 Old Highway 99. My wife and I searched, my wife and I searched the state of Michigan for over three years to buy a little horsey farm. Three and a half years ago, we were fortunate enough to buy a property here in White River Township. And we've got a couple of horses on it. Now we got all the 9 acres. It's beautiful. I will tell you right here and now that we would not have purchased that property if we had known that there was this massive solar project being worked out in the back rooms at the very time we were purchasing this land. And yes, we do feel that we will get hit hard if they put this thing in financially. There will be takings, taking a value from me and my family for this. I've only got a few points. I love what you people have said tonight. I'm a technology guy. I'm pro-solar. I mean, I spent my career building Disney World, okay? That's all tech. You know, project manager. So I think that technology has to be appropriately placed. I am adamantly opposed to this program. It's just too darn big. Now, we had someone come in, I think from, you know, most of the way across the state and noted that nuclear power is at least 10 years out. I don't know, you got a crystal ball, that's great. But what I'm going to tell you is Palisades Nuclear is coming back. Gretchen Whitmer did not get everything wrong, but Gretchen Whitmer certainly got wrong the idea that the state should come in here with eminent domain and shove this thing down our throats. I am upset by this. Little fun fact, okay? How many acres of solar do you think it would take to power every household in White River Township? And I'm going to use the most conservative numbers I could find, okay? The optimistic solar company numbers are, you know, like up to 200 households per acre. We would need, at the least optimistic pace, 16.16 acres of solar power to completely power every household in this township. Now, we are offering 500 acres. This is 30 times as much as we're going to consume in our households. And we are willing to export that. It's in our zoning. I think that's enough. I don't think we should be unduly burdened. I'd also like to point out that these gentlemen farmers who are part of this project, who built this backroom deal. Thank you. Bought agricultural land because it was agricultural land. I bought my land because it is agricultural land. I have no expectation in a zoned community to convert my land and build a casino or whatever I want, a brothel, I don't care, you know? No, it's a zoned community. I'm asking.
Three minutes. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay. Money doesn't talk. It swears.
Wow, huh? Um, yeah. You know, when we were kids, we yelled geronimo. Oh, I'm sorry. Amy Wilkinson, 11038 Old Highway 99. And yes, we'll be looking directly at the proposed solar. When we were kids, we yelled geronimo when leaping off tall places into the void. So I looked up, what's the significance of yelling geronimo? It turns out that it was actually Mexican soldiers when they were fighting against the Apache and they were scared. They yelled geronimo because it meant that they were asking their Saint Jerome to save them, okay? Well, I'm scared. I'm scared what this is going to do to our community, to the wildlife, to this beautiful township, and more importantly, to this state. We're supposed to be pure Michigan, pure beauty. And we're getting sold out to data farms and quote unquote, green renewable energy. The only thing green about this is the green and the money that is being generated for these corporations. Over 100 years ago, communities were being ruined by industry moving into their residential areas. So the concept of local zoning came about. This is 100 years ago. Our great-grandparents brought their fight to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court ruled in their favor for local zoning. The Communist China Party plays by different rules. They ruined thousand-year-old shrines and villages for progress. I think that our authoritarian bureaucrats in Lansing are giving up our land in a massive rape of our zoned community. Industrial solar belongs in industrial zoned areas, period. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Bender. I live at 9633 Old Highway 99. Sorry for being late, but thank you for all the work that you guys have been doing. You know, you guys have worked very hard. And I urge you with this project to vote no. Multiple reasons why. One reason is I think that this project is much larger than our township needs. I agree with those ideas that it is, it is too big for what we have in our community. When it comes to, we offered 500 acres and I think that when it comes to geronimo, they have not compromised. And we need to see some amount of compromise in this. The amount of acres that we have, really, if we're being honest, they're not going to green energy. They're going to things like AI. Everybody is using AI now. Everybody's pushing for AI. Well, if we really want to be green, maybe that's something that we should be considering is, let's not do, and then if we put in 500 acres, it's much more powerful. And I know that that's like a bigger question, a bigger topic. But this idea of putting in 1,600 or 1,900, whatever the number is at this point, is much larger than the 500 that we said. And 500 could go on a brownfield. That would be wonderful. But if that can't work, then let's just at least find a compromise much better than what we're currently having. For us, it will be surrounding our property, except for on one side, so we can enjoy the one side that we will have. And I am concerned that history does tell a story. I have four children and each of those have heard us. We got to go to the Things for DuPont and talk about the Things for DuPont when we did it in my classroom. And they understand that that was, that was a mistake. Like, we don't want to do that again. Well, why would we want to do this then? Why would we want to move forward and have our land worse? Then we have two problems. And so I urge you to vote no for this project. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Irene Scolton. I'm 7044 West Old Channel Trail. I don't know if I need this microphone because my voice is really loud. But I just want to say, thank you, board members, for having this special meeting and allowing us residents to, chance to express our concerns. I truly appreciate your time and effort to take a listen to us and who live here and care deeply about this community. care deeply about this community. And that's why it's deeply concerning to me when Geronimo, AKA Lakeside Solar, claims their company for the community, because their actions show the exact opposite. They say they want to spend time with the community and listen to our concerns, yet when it comes for a real conversation, they either send their interns, or it takes great persistence to contact them. When we have asked them questions like, and they were, when we ask them questions and they respond with things like, "Well, we can't stay without our lawyer present," or,[1029.54][1029.57]"Our engineer hasn't, our engineer isn't here, he can't answer it." I've spoken with several residents who tried to reach out to Lakeside Solar LLC directly about their concerns, only to have their calls go to voicemail. Or they have never heard back, or we have to persistently bug them to come out to the property to see what is going on. That's not communication, that's avoidance. Guaramo. This farmland represents our history, our livelihoods, our values. You cannot say you respect this community while planning to destroy the ground that we built. We are not against development, we are against irresponsible development. That's why we offered a better option, a brownfield site, that's ready for redevelopment, that doesn't erase our agricultural history and heritage. Because our township deserves more than what you are trying to do, which is why I encourage the panel, the board, to say no to this proposition. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mario Panata. I live at 7511 Forestline, Rochester, but I grew up in Montague. It just saddens me to see everything being taken over nowadays. I grew up here. Yeah. Now, I just remember this old picture of an Indian, you know, Cody Irony, sitting over the land and seeing it be taken over. And it just almost brings me to tears. So with this going on, my children and grandchildren are being affected. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you again for your participation and for taking time to share your valuable insights. Your comments are important to us, and we will take them, all the comments received, into consideration as we move forward. We appreciate your caution and engagement shown tonight. Thank you for making your voices heard. I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All support.
Okay, we have motions for any discussion. Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Close. Okay, that, the public hearing. We will move forward now with the beginning part of the meeting, and we'll start with the zoning administrative report. Bill speaking.
All right, I want to make this kind of quick, because just how long this is going on. Last 30 days, we have 25 different projects starting to deal with zoning and planning. I thought it was slowing down about a week ago, and on Monday I had seven new calls. And all but one had to do with building something or starting to do some planning for building something come spring. Interestingly, not a single one was even remotely close to where the solar was ready to be planned. There's all someplace else, but still in the township. By the way, looks like we're in a busy spring again. We had a lot of building going on this year. It looks like things are few enough for anybody busy building come out in this spring.
Thank you, Bill. White River Township voted for it. I'm going to start reporting John Howell.
I'll be brief.
Okay.
I'll be brief. Last week I had no new residential complaints, and I'm going to have several complaints right now. So I'm going to have several complaints right now, and I've got one certified letter out there that the gal seems to be dodging. The letter pointed out, so I'll work on that. That's it.
No complaints, thank you, John. White River Township correspondent Julie Gerstein.
Uh, I just want to let everybody know that, you know, we are taking in absent voter ballots. You can drop them off in the drop box, mail them back. We have our public accuracy testing this Thursday at 10:00 a.m. if you want to come and watch. And I will be at the township hall the Saturday before the election from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And November 4th is the election, and the topic you are voting on is a milled renewal for the White Lake Ambulance Authority.
Thank you, Julie. Planning Commission member comments? I have a comment. A letter dated October 15th was sent to the township hall, and White River Township residents from Lakeside Solar, many people received them yesterday and today. The letter clarified the legal process to review the Lakeside Solar special land use permit. The Planning Commission has 120 days from September 15th to January 14th, 2026, to make a decision. There's a lot of information to review. Our zoning administrator, Bill Schmig, did request an extension to Lakeside Solar due to holiday schedules, the large amount of data to read, and the part-time nature of our planning commission. He requested 12 extra days, which would have allowed the planning commission to have the vote at a regular planning meeting on the third Tuesday of January, January 20th. That request was denied by Lakeside Solar. Therefore, the planning commission will be voting closer to year end, and unfortunately, it may affect, interrupt some holiday schedules. The letter from Lakeside Solar dated October 15th continued to discuss the next steps in the planning commission's agendas. We appreciate open communication and look forward to working collaboratively in question-answer sessions, and we will set the agendas accordingly. Also, for clarification, in the letter dated October 15th, let, excuse me, Lakeside Solar indicated that, excuse me, that the planning commission will be voting and forwarding recommendation to the board for final vote. That is an incorrect process. The zoning ordinance provides that the planning commission makes the final determination regarding special land uses in Chapter 16. Thank you. Then we will move on to planning commission discussion and approval of future meeting dates. As of today, we have three meetings to further discuss and have collaboration with question-answer sessions regarding the permit application. The three meetings are as follows. Well, okay, the two regular meetings coming up are the third Tuesday of November and December at 6:30, then November 18th and 16th. Those are our two next regular sessions. As a chair, I would like to vote these two meetings to the expiration of the special land use permit application. I propose a third special meeting of December 2nd at 6:30 p.m. And in the future, the planning commission will set up a special meeting with informed, for an informed vote prior to January 14th, and also any additional special meetings determined That being said, is there any discussion about these three upcoming meetings to discuss the SLU application?
So that was December 2nd?
We have December 2nd would be our special meeting. In addition to that, we have a special meeting set up for November 13th. We have a, that will be a public hearing for, um, the short-term rental and non-conforming structures and a closed session. So we have November 13th at 6:30 for the public hearing, and then November 18th is our regular meeting at 6:30, December 2nd at 6:30, and December 16th at 6:30. Oh, one more thing. In addition to that, we also have our special meeting for the Parks and Rec, which is coming up sooner than that. October 28th, just for clarification. Also at 6:30. Any discussion about our upcoming meetings?
Lauren, can you repeat the date where there will be a closed session?
November 13th.
Thank you.
Lauren, are the, is the venue going to be at the township hall in all those cases?
Well, we will have to determine that. We haven't discussed that yet, but we will get information out as appropriate. Okay, then we will move forward with proper procedure to add the special meetings. Any public comment not related to the open public hearing, special land use permit? Public comments? Not related to the special land use, right? Could you come down so we can...
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you for putting more to my mind. If you will sign, I have mine, so you can have it.
Thank you. Okay, then, oh, we have another, I'm sorry.
As an elder in this community, I want to compliment this audience as to how respectful they treated everybody who spoke today. Unfortunately, I did see two people in ties that I was watching that were not as respectful. But that being said, I think this audience has done an amazing job.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, then I will look for a motion to adjourn.
We'll move, we return the meeting at this time.
Any discussion?